I think this is pretty ridiculous. Full shots in a booster.
Well, you know what? You're probably all set. Is he?
Not only on Twitter.
Okay.
Somebody in Blanford. They read the directions. I saw that. Why?
I don't let myself in over here. Oh, it's kind of the turkeys.
You're trying to watch about the big guy.
I heard the parking lot was packed today.
Yeah, I pulled in here like 3:30.
Recording.
But what it bothered was they were an hour late with the turkeys. They weren't going to be here until four.
All right, we're being recorded. I'm going to open the meeting. It's six o'clock. My trusty timekeeper tells me it's time. Yes, I'm running the meeting as the host from here so I can let people in. Okay, welcome. So we have some meeting minutes to look at. From the eighth and fifteenth. Excuse me? I'll second that. Any discussion? All favor? Aye. All right, so this looks like we were all here. There you go.
I can't sign that.
Were you not here for that one? This is the. I just signed the wrong one. A motion to approve the meeting minutes of November 8th as written. Is there a second? Any discussion? All favor? So, um. TJ, you wanted to abstain from the meeting minutes on the eighth.
Correct.
Is that when you were done? Okay.
No.
All right, so these are signed. Those over there. All right. Yeah. I don't think he passed the sign on because he wasn't here. This is the one he was absent. Yeah. Um, that's right. Next up, no, you know what? I gave you the wrong one first. It was my fault. Audience participation, public comment. I've got chips more cross with a couple of things here, so I'm going to let this person in and go right ahead.
Okay. Most of you or everybody in this room, I'm sure knows George Forrest. George Forrest was here last week and had a good chance to catch up with him. And he is from Waukesha, Wisconsin, and I have a note from him here. Yes, the events of yesterday are tragic. I'm involved in some volunteer work at the Waukesha South High School. And I fear that their marching band was involved in all this terrible incident. Not many details are available yet. I did hear that the person of interest was someone who just got out of jail and was fleeing from a knife fight. And of course, this question as to whether or not alcohol was involved. And so just, I think it's with George's connection with Blanford and whatever. I think it really is important that we are. Give all of Waukesha our concern and our thoughts and prayers with the suffering there. Forty-eight people were hurt in this parade and five people were killed, and it was just a terrible, terrible time.
That's heartbreaking.
Taking notice of it as a town.
Yeah.
And sending our thoughts and prayers to Waukesha.
Absolutely. That's going to be a long road to rebuilding that.
So, secondly, I will just make this very. Brief here. I'll read this. But Blanford Historical Society is approximately halfway through its 99-year lease on the town's 1845 central schoolhouse. We continue to be a constructive tenant, having just replaced the building's failing 19 windows and an exterior door without costing the town anything. Local contractors and excellent craftsmen Keith and Shane Bloomrose did an outstanding job with this project. And I'd like to thank them for incredible work. And tomorrow, the interior finished work will be completed by Mike Trimble of Mike's Painting. Secondly, thanks to John Crane and his friend Tim Fair, who was a professional arborist and owner of the Granville-based Liberty Hill Tree Care Company. The wonderful tree in front of the Historical Society is all expertly now set with its lights for the tree lighting. And the town annual tree lighting in Carol Singh will be on Sunday, December 5th at 5:00. And we encourage everybody to come and join us and have a good time and come look at our new windows. And then finally, just a little further update in terms of what's going on with the Historical Society. We plan a full Blanford summer concert series coming up this summer. And the final restoration work on the white church will be complete by Memorial Day. And then plans are well underway for a major Labor Day weekend celebration of the building's 200th anniversary. And we will have all kinds of wonderful things going on, including we intend to have a parade, which we will invite the newly sworn-in mayor of Holyoke and his family to come join us. So that's a little update on what's going on with the Historical Society.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's all good stuff. Thank you.
I will give this to our. I'll see.
Any other audience participation? Either digitally or I heard a Zoom. Is that a Zoom message on here? No, okay. All right.
Thank you. Move on. Take care.
Um, all right, so we have one action item up today. We've got approve the PVPC invoice number four. Is that invoice when?
You should have it in front of you.
Uh huh, right here. Invoice number four for community development. So this is Putting Hill. That's not it. Here it is. Okay, so this is the invoice for it's a total of $8,602.16. This is for time spent completing the housing rehab and septic system replacement and estimated 12 homes. So I don't know if you all remember a while ago when they came and talked to us about receiving some funds. And then residents of Blanford applied for the lottery and some data and this is what that's regarding.
We don't need a motion. It's just a formality. They like to have these in. It's already they like to have them back.
They just needed sign.
Right.
All right, so today is the 22nd already. There you go. Okay, so I have no other action items, but I do have unfinished business. I've got Putting Hill Farm, the host community agreement request for change. No vote needed. Wendy, do you? I get so confused because when I look at your name, it says Josh Garcia and I keep going to call you Josh Baxman. Um, is there a change? Is there a change to this?
No, I'm wondering if, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I am wondering if this is confusing because what we've got is Putting Hill Road with the Springfield Water and Sewer looking for an intergovernmental agreement change. And what we've got is actually a host community agreement request from Belle Fleur for a change.
This one.
That does say Putting Hill and that's a host community. What is that?
Yeah, it does say.
To me, I can't see it.
Marijuana. This is, they're small. Um, they're a little small company that's doing like a $30,000 a year operation. So I know that they were in the process of, we had approved everything up to now, but I'm just not sure. It says been a little sticky at the top, says I don't need a vote, but I just want to make sure I know what I'm signing. It's saying pursuant to 935 CMR, yada, yada. The municipality firms, the entity listed above is in compliance. Okay, so we're just saying.
Oh, yeah, sorry. This is simply, uh, yes, okay, thank you. This is simply saying, yes, you should sign that. I rechecked with council and planning whoever, and they said, yes, all you do is sign that in return. They've done what they need to do with Blanford and then they submit it to the Cannabis Control Commission. And this comeback comes back and all you need to do is sign it. I was really scratching my head because I had two Putting Hill things going on today.
It was, we were confused last time too. So I can see on the attached paperwork that they have filed licenses. And then they submitted plans to zoning. They've met all the criteria.
Right, and I had council advise and I said, just, yeah, no reason not to sign it. Everything was on order on the town's end of things, so. And that needs to be returned. I'll take care of that.
Do you either of you guys want to look at it?
For.
Look. So speaking of which, I should just mention that the, we have Belle Fleur here today. This is their second year in a row giving out fresh organic free-range turkeys. I wonder how many turkeys they gave out today. Do you know?
Two hundred and sixty.
Two hundred and sixty turkeys.
That's what they brought.
That's amazing. So residents of Blanford got a little postcard in the mail. They could sign up. They could get a turkey. They're fresh. They're ready to be brined. I know that's what I'm going to do with mine. And it's just a really kind thoughtful approach because I know it saves a big chunk of the cost for Thanksgiving dinner. That's for sure, especially if you want a non-frozen turkey. It's going to be empty. We really appreciate it. It's really wonderful. Um, okay, so next up, we've got a big topic, the Town Administrator Search. So I followed emails going back and forth. Wendy and Mary a little bit this week. I did confirm that it is 40 hours. It's not the 35, so it is the 40 hours. And I, I'm going to open up a document and share it with you so we're all looking at the same thing. So. Let me see if I can open that large. Share screen. Okay, so Wendy, is this what you want me to take a look at first here? The job posting?
Well, I was actually, you can look at it, but I was actually thinking that the the screening committee, and I am calling it a screening committee rather than a search committee because that is the language that's used by the open meeting law for the purposes of, you know, when you interview, the first interview can be done in executive session, so. I have, I just had those areas highlighted and Mary has some comments. I think she's there. Thought I saw her. She, no, I had a long conversation. We've had several conversations, but this is what I've drafted so far and Mary might want to say something. Or you may want to ask me or her.
Okay, so did you want to comment before we?
Not on the job posting. The job posting is according to what the Collins Institute has given us.
Okay.
With whatever revisions and changes you guys have submitted.
Okay.
So we're fine with that. That's a big chunk. We don't have to worry about.
Perfect.
Okay, let me just, let me just correct that. Collins had nothing to do with the job posting. They did the job description, which I had before you last week. You had some comments, Cara, which I've integrated in and made other corrections from the meeting last week. That's already. This is just the posting and that's something that the board and the screening committee can weigh in on. I think that should be minimal because you pay for this, pay a lot. And it directs people to the website, which will have the larger community profile related and the position description as well. So.
So I can. Just going to try to help you fill in some of the blanks. Has a $4 million budget and oh, how many full-time? Employees. I don't know the answer to that.
I can.
We have a town administrator, a highway superintendent. How many full-timers do you have? Three? That makes five. Is Nicole full-time at the level? Is that it? That's it for full-time? I think that's it.
Well, I was going to combine them into one pull-in. Yeah.
Okay, so then I guess.
We can, we can figure that out. I didn't know if someone knew that off the top of their heads, so.
But I do agree with the salary range. I thought we had started at 65. We were saying 65.
Okay, okay.
I mean, 65 to 85 is what we have here. That's, I'm fine with that. We had, I think we had budgeted safely 75, but if we, if we by chance find an expert who warrants 85, I don't see, personally, I don't see anything wrong with putting that in advertisement. I think it draws some more talent to us. It opens up, you know, maybe some more people applying, so.
Okay. 65 to 85.
Um, so are you looking for us to cut this down at all, Wendy, or as is, you're fine with this?
No, just, um, this is pretty much what you've, you know.
Okay.
That's already, a lot of this is elsewhere, but just to get the number right and we'll, we'll get a number on the employees as well.
Okay.
I think the screening committee is meeting on Friday and they can take a look at that as well.
Friday morning, Mary, is that right? Friday morning at 10 o'clock, so the screening community is going to meet. So you need me to open up some of the materials that from Mary, the questions? Is that what you want me to open next?
No, I think you want to let them run with it at this point.
All we're going to do on Friday is have an organizational meeting.
Okay.
It's critical that we have our leadership to this committee in place so that when the, after the job is posted and the profile is on the website, we can hit the ground running, wheeling the applications as they come in.
Okay.
That's what's critical.
So you don't. So you don't need anything more from us right now?
No.
Perfect. Wendy, do you need anything more from us right now?
No, and I just wanted to add that in order to post this and the Beacon or the Hartford Current, wherever the committee decides, we need all the ducks in order. So if we're going to post it and we're directing someone to the website to look at more information, that has to be all done. So Mary and I are working on the community profile together.
Did you send me that last revision of the job description?
I think I, okay, I thought I did, but I will do it again.
I like that. That makes sense. Okay, so we're going to then, the select board, my favorite part of this committee process is that we can be involved. I love that. So it's on you. Feel free to ask any questions if you need anything, if you need help with the crew that you have. I think it's a really good group. I have confidence in you all. And so if you need anything else from us, just let us know. Is there anything else regarding Town Administrator Search that we want to address, Wendy, before I move on to the next one?
I defer to Mary at this point.
No, not at this minute. I will say that there's a tremendous turnover out there.
Yeah.
Job. Administrators and managers, they're just.
I know. Teachers are quitting left and right, so maybe you'll get a teacher.
I will say that.
No, I'm not going to. No, thank you.
We could show off of math skills.
I'll be adding with my fingers. Okay, thank you, Mary. Next up on unfinished business, I have Blanford Sun. What does that mean?
Okay, I have that on my report as well. That is, they're requesting the amendment. I think we talked a little bit about this last week. They requested an amendment to their host community agreement. And Josh had suggested I talk to Harold Shide from RRG, who has done a lot of work on this. And I've since found out that the person that you used, Mr. Bishop, Harold gave me his name, but Harold agreed to take a look at it and get back to us. And as I wrote, I wrote back to Joanne today that I don't hear from him shortly. We can look for Mr. Bishop and get this resolved. Okay?
So we'll move that to the next meeting then?
Yes.
Okay, and will you just do me a favor and leave clear notes? For our next person to be able to understand what's happening with that, just in case?
Well, we'll get to that in my report.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to, do we have any other unfinished business before I move on to new business? Okay, I'm going to move on. Oh, you know what? I'm just, I'm sorry. I realized I have Jennifer here and I'm not seeing it on here, so I'm going to move to Board, I'm going to have Board of Health up as unfinished business and I'm going to have a Board of Health report. Jennifer, does that sound good to you? Hold on, I think she, oh, no, she's not muted. She might not be. Jennifer, Jennifer, Bo, Jennifer, Banana, Fan.
Um, Cara, would you introduce the two other members of the board for Caleb and?
Sorry, Caleb. This is where I do the, this is TJ over here. And. And Joanne is way over there. I can't stand. Joanne are, she's the glue that holds us together. She's over here.
You can see her arm from here.
It has a pin in it, so that means it's important.
So when you see me do this, it's TJ and this is Tom. That helps a lot. I know, we have, we need our screen situation. Okay, so Jennifer's not here, so we're going to skip that and come back to her when she's ready. And well, I could send her a chat. Okay, so the first thing up, blame the Holyoke St. Patrick's Day Parade. Is that, do we have an official invite from Mayor Garcia? All right.
No, it came from the committee, actually, I think.
Okay.
I don't know if Joanne has that paperwork there.
It's in front of you.
I heard a Cara. Jennifer?
Cara?
Yes.
Hello, Jess.
I hate this when I'm not in person. Because I can't figure out how to get the unmute done. Anyway. Okay, you guys are really, you're hard.
Okay, so I see I have two Jennifers. I have Jennifer on the phone and I have Jennifer who is a yellow blob.
I'm the yellow blob. I'm also, and I'm also on the phone because I can't get the speaker thing to work.
No worries. Do you want to give us a update?
I do, I do. So we have had some concerns. We are rising quickly in COVID for Blanford. Every day I'm getting the new, you know, one to two new cases. And over the weekend, I had several phone calls from residents with concerns. And so I really kind of thought maybe we need to put in place to put the masks on when you're at the town hall or in an indoor building. I mean, we don't have that many indoor buildings to be in in Blanford, so it really shouldn't be a hardship. You know, I hate going backwards. Yes, I do, but I just think till we get over this little hump. I mean, that's my recommendations. I don't know what you guys feel. I do know that we are on a verge, a very fine line right now of having a large cluster. And I don't know whether that's going to fade out or become a huge cluster for another five days.
Okay.
So, and that's exactly the concern.
Okay, so I think, so the only two buildings I think we're looking at is Town Hall and the library. Is that correct for us as far as mandating?
Right, because you've got the, the places are closed. You've got the Historical Society. You've got, I don't know what else. I guess those three.
So the library has already mandated masks. The, I don't even think the church, the church is open. That's.
I'm not touching the church.
Great, okay. So Town Hall, what do you guys think? I am fine with mandating them again temporarily until Board of Health tells us that we're back in a downslide.
How many cases are we talking in town?
Jennifer, TJ is asking how many cases are we talking about in town?
How many total cases?
Yeah.
From, like, from when? From just the past week? You've had 10 cases. You've had about 10 cases.
10 cases in the past week.
Thank you.
If not more. I don't have the exact number on me, so you can't quote me or put that in the paper. But we've had quite a few. For a small town and the number of people that we have in town, we have, it's quite a few. Our main concern right now is that we could very well be heading towards a large cluster. But we don't, again, that's a very fine line. I can't say we are and I can't say we aren't. I think we're going to be okay. But we have five days to go.
These people are quarantined?
I don't think we can ask.
I'm not asking who they are. I'm asking if these people are quarantined.
TJ is asking about quarantine.
Yeah, people are quarantined. We have a lot of people in, we have a lot of people in town that are quarantined. Yeah.
So what do we want to do as a board to, for masks in Town Hall?
I go with the temporary.
So.
I think.
Do you need a?
I think that. Go ahead, what, Cara?
Do you need a motion from us, Jennifer, or do you want us to just agree to put something temporary up on the door until we hear otherwise from you?
Um, I think we should keep in touch and just, you know, enforce it when you guys are there or, you know, whoever's there, that they can't come in without a mask. You know, I think I sent Joanne a, I don't know if she got it, a thing to post up, not to come in, you know, building without a mask. I think we should go back to maybe the social distancing a little bit. I know you do a good job of that anyways with the meeting and the chairs spread apart, so.
Okay, so, um, Joanne, Jennifer's going to, Joanne's going to check to see if she got what you sent and she'll post that.
I didn't get.
She says she did not get it. Would you mind resending, Jennifer?
It might be there. I just haven't, I haven't had time to check my email this evening.
That's fine. That's fine.
It's probably there.
Okay. So it might be there, so she'll just, she can resend it. And we'll post that. And does it mention something about social distancing? So it's all in one place or should we add that?
Um, yeah, we can do a social distancing. I think we do have the signs for that already.
Okay.
I think, I think.
Can we have you on next week's? Can we have you on next week's agenda? We'll touch base weekly and see if we leave it or remove it?
Sure.
Okay, perfect.
We can do that.
That sound good, guys? We'll touch base.
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
All right. Thank you very much, Jennifer. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, all right, Hoyoke Parade. Do you guys want to participate in the Hoyoke Parade?
Why not?
Why not? It's fun. Yeah? Are you gonna ride the fire truck? All right. Yeah, if you want to talk to the fire chief, um, and we should talk to Tammy. And who else do we want to talk to? We don't have any Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts. Library, want to do anything?
I will ask all the, uh, for the last Hoyoke Parade, Josh got a banner that said, "Land for Town."
I have my selectman banner still. Do you have that one in there, Joe?
I think there are banners in the closet in the, in the town administrator's office. I think there are some banners there.
We have, we have some banners. You were, you walked in it last time with us. But you were in the, or fire truck. Okay. Um, okay. So yes, the answer is yes. We definitely want to, I suggest to be front and center with Josh, by the way. We better get a good spot in the parade. Just saying, because we sacrificed a lot this year for Hoyoke, so. All right, Christopher Robinson. Is that the name of the winning pool?
Yes.
Is this a prank? Is this gonna be a Zoom prank? Hold your breath. Okay. Um, next up, I've got the 2022 liquor licenses. Do you need me to sign something or are those, you just let me know that those are in the process?
Yeah, I thought we did. There was only two.
Nothing has been done. They're due the end of December, right, Wendy? I've not done them before, so I'm stepping into this.
I thought November. I thought we did have them tonight. We'll have them next week.
I didn't understand.
You've got all the paperwork though, correct?
I have all the paperwork. Yes, I have the approval from the fire department. Okay, so everything's here.
We'll take a look at them and, and.
It's due tonight.
It's okay.
Assist the two.
Let me know if you have any questions. I've done them before, but I've done them years ago, so.
I've been on the other end of them, but I've never done this.
Yeah. Uh, you might need town clerk. You used to need, um.
Wendy gave me directions, a nice set of directions, but.
If it's.
We'll, we'll.
Hours.
Two. We'll get it done.
Yep.
Make sure you're putting in for extra hours, Joanne, and if there's something that you need your help with, please don't like, over, you know, don't stress over it, like, reach out and ask for help.
Accounting came to me and they're gonna stick around until there's a new TA and.
Okay, good. Yeah. Eric was very friendly. I did reach out and have a conversation with him. I said, I've never had to call you before. Don't make me have to call you.
Call me?
No, Eric.
Oh.
Um, okay, uh, all department expense report.
Here isn't a new one.
Beautiful. I love hearing that. So town administrator report. Um, Wendy, do you want to introduce us to Mr. Mitchell? Who's here and, uh, thank you for joining us. I appreciate it.
Okay, so Caleb Mitchell is here from Hinsdale. Surprised me because I know you live in Pittsfield, correct? And you've been working in Peru, but he also has a little cabin in Windsor. He gets around. Um, I, I am anticipating leaving, myself leaving before you'd have a permanent town administrator in place. I started reaching out, both, you know, letting people know the town was seeking a town administrator and also an, another interim. And I talked to a variety of colleagues out in Berkshire County. And, um, I connected with Caleb. And here he is. So let him, you know, go from here and then, uh, the board can ask questions.
Thank you, Caleb. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
That depends on how much you want me to tell you. Uh, I was born and raised in Pittsburgh, still. And graduated from Pittsfield High School and I went to college down in Charleston, South Carolina, which is called Charleston Southern University. And worked down there for a number of years and then I moved back up here. They're back to the Berkshires eventually. I've had, you know, in the last, um, will I say, twenty plus years, um, I went back to graduate school. I got a master's degree in resource management and administration and became the, conservation agent for the city of Pittsfield. I've actually served in Hinsdale. I was their private, I was a private consultant for their conservation commission. From the year 2000 all the way till the year 2017. And, um, I left for about a year and, um, and then their conservation agent position opened up again and I came back here. While I was in Peru, I actually was retired, not really doing much of anything, to be quite honest at the time. Spending time up in my cabin in Windsor. Organic, organic gardening and skiing and hiking and doing things like that. And then, um, I had a friend ask me if I'd be interested in the town administrative position in Peru. I put a resume in and interviewed and they offered me the job and I've been there since January 2nd of 2017. So I've, I've been there five years. And that was the commitment I gave them at the time. Learned a lot, been through quite a bit there, but, you know, we've made, I think, a lot of positive, um, strides and, um, improvements in the town. Since, since the time I've been there. Um, we went through the whole process of becoming a green community broadband. We went through the whole, you know, uh, process of broadband. It's all installed. Everybody's got, you know, fiber optics now in town. Just recently got a, a Mass Works grant for reconstruction of a road. And we also joined the Mohawk Trail Williams Partnership. And I've gotten to a couple of grants in, uh, last year and this year for that. We're trying to promote Peru as a, uh, it's kind of like a tourist type, uh, destination. We've been using the grant funds, um, to make improvements, um, to put up signs and things like that. We have a lot of state park land in Peru. It, you know, almost half the town is state owned, so. We're trying to promote kind of like eco-tourism now in the town. And then, of course, there's all the day-to-day operations. I have, I'm really serving in multiple roles in Peru. I'm kind of the chief procurement officer. I'm, um, the ADA coordinator. I'm, I'm, and when this, the council agent director resigns, I, I assume that position also. As well as being, uh, the human resource director, personnel director. And, you know, sort of various duties. Doing all the agendas for the select board, um, and then actually in the last, because our administrative assistant resigned. I've had to assume doing the minutes also in meetings, so. So I, you know, I have a quite a background, you know, and I've been doing this for five years and I've enjoyed it, you know? It's been, uh, it's, it's been a, uh, a job that I, I've been, you know, enjoyed. But, um, I'm leaving Peru, you know, shortly. I don't want to make any long-term commitment and that's why I was interested in like an interim town administrator position.
So I'm gonna warn you, people that work for Blanford tend to fall in love with Blanford and they don't want to leave. So I just, it's, it's on the record. We've given you that warning.
I'm sure it's a beautiful town.
It sounds like what, what you've been going through is a lot of what we've been going through in Blanford, um, really sort of, um, right, a parallel with what we've been, we've been dealing with from fiber optic, um, and the wayfinding and all of that stuff they're working on now. Same sort of ideas. So I think that it sounds like, um, that you would be able to sort of fall in place and be able to help carry us along for, for this process. Um, do you guys have questions, anything to ask Caleb? Do you, do you play well with others is what TJ is asking about your management style with staff.
Work well with other, I always try to be positive. I don't, I don't, I don't try to be, uh, I don't try to be negative in any way because I think that's detrimental. So, and I always try to, I mean, best thing is you're there to help people, so. If people need help or they, you know, need you to try to help them, you know, solve a problem or, or, you know, assist them, then that's what the town administrator is there. See if they, or point them in the right direction to somebody that can help them. Um, that's very important.
We've made a, um, a fairly, I want to say large shift to being very civil in Blanford. Our meetings look a lot different than they did here about, uh, eight, 10 years ago. So, um, the positivity and being progressive and just being civil, working together, I think has, has really helped us, um, to, to gain a lot of headway. So we appreciate that positivity a lot. So what was I gonna just ask you? I can't remember. Oh, as Wendy, I'm sure as Phil do, and we've got a lot of, um, conservation stuff going on with the city of Springfield right now. We're sort of in the midst of, um, issues we've had with them for a while. I'm trying, I was trying to find an email. Josh had forwarded me something. He sent out a bunch of information. I want to say it was to one of our reps recently. I will find it and share it with you guys. So that is one thing that, um, you know, if you decide to take on Blanford, that, that we would probably need a little bit of help within the process. It's just managing, um, that conversation a little bit and I could certainly.
Is this mass, is this the mass department of, um, environmental protection you're talking, you're speaking about?
No, it's, um.
City of Springfield?
Yeah, it's the Springfield On Water and Sewer Commission. They own a third of Blanford.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and.
They own, uh, they own, uh, land for, uh, like, uh, reservoir land.
Yes, they own our reservoir and the road, uh, to Cabo Mountain has been closed since, um, nine 11. So there's a couple of different conversations we've been having. One of them is the road opening. Um, and then others are around, um, the land that they continue to purchase, um, in Blanford. So we've been trying to fight that a little with representation from senators and representatives and, and whatnot. So it's a conversation happening right now. So that would definitely be something that, that sounds like you would be very eligible to be a part of with us, so.
Well, it'd be difficult to make a comment now on that until I, uh, was able to, uh, look into the details of what the issues are.
Yeah, I'll send you, I can send you some, um, some other emails that have gone back and forth so you can read up on it if you're interested.
Sure.
There's a lot of emails. All right, so thank you. I don't have any questions. I think that, um, Wendy, if you want to just keep us posted on, you know, what you're looking for in a time, you know, as far as a timeframe for you staying with us and when you're thinking of, of phasing out. And, um, we can talk with Caleb and, you know, establish a timeframe there.
Look at. What I was, what I was hoping is that, um, that Caleb could start, uh, when he could start. Well, I'm hoping that you would like Caleb to start. It's your, up to you and, um, him. And when that would be and that I would work that, like I did with Josh, a bit of a crossover week, of exchange and deep, you know, I'll talk about this when I get to my report, but the kind of.
Okay.
You know, information and I would share with him what I learned about what's most important to know. And, uh, yeah.
So do you want to start, um, would you be working through contract negotiations with Caleb for us? If that's.
Uh, yeah, well, he and I've talked a little bit about that, you know? So I don't know. Yes, okay, I will. We're talking an hourly rate. Now, he also is retired and you can work, how, how many hours a week do you imagine yourself working for the town of Blanford, Caleb?
I said, uh, twenty plus, approximately twenty hours a week to start out because I'm finishing up in Peru. And then if need be, I can work additional hours if it's necessary.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just say that with, with what happened with me is, um, council strongly advised that it be no, no more than nineteen hours. Uh, because of the issues of benefits and stuff.
I was offering twenty plus hours just if the town needed me, but if they want to keep you below that, that's.
Yeah. I will say though, I'm, I'm paid for nineteen, but I'm working much more than that, as is Joanne. So, and people are aware of that, so, um, uh, but I am not very good about that. I'll just keep going if I needs to get stuff done. So don't follow my example, um, you know? But you, you do what you need to do to, to make it work for you and for the town.
If town council is, I get why they're saying nineteen, but if we need more hours to get the job done, then in my opinion, it's, it's worth it for us to pay to. I would rather, like, I, I understand and appreciate town council's, uh, advice. However, my concern over the town administrator work getting done is, I think it's, it's a little higher than.
Right. Well, the other issue is, as retirees, both Caleb and I are retirees in the public retirement system. We by, uh, state law cannot work more than twenty-three hours per week or, uh, I forget what the amount is per year. I mean, it can be higher in one week and lower in others, as long as you don't work over a certain amount per year.
I think it's nine hundred and sixty hours total.
I think, actually, you just reminded me. It's higher now and it's twenty-three up to twenty.
Did they amend that? They amended that?
Yes, yeah, twenty, they, they override the governor's veto. It's twenty-three hours a week.
Twenty-three hours?
Yeah.
I think they did that because they saw that a lot of small towns were relying on people that were retirees. That were professionals.
And large towns, by the way.
Well, maybe lots, right, but a lot of small towns were relying on retired, retired professionals.
Right. A real lack of, of people stepping up, so.
So I think realistically, you know, whatever, whatever we need to do to make sure that you're able to have the time to, you know, to get, to get the work done that you need to get done. And twenty-three hours is what it is, then I think we all agree that that's, you know? So I, I don't think what, what we're saying, I don't think you have to worry about the nineteen necessarily.
Okay.
A hard line for us. Um, but I would personally be interested in, Wendy, if you would, would do the contract negotiations. Does that sound something you guys are interested in, Caleb? So if that could be our next step, then, because I know Wendy, you don't want to stay forever. Um, and so if we start that process, then that can, that can help with your transition.
Okay. Caleb and I can talk, uh, I can send him a copy of the employment agreement. Council does say, it, it does have to be an employment agreement. It can't be a contract because of the Fair Labor Standard Act and the requirement, the difference. So I can send him a copy of mine with the language and we can go from there.
Okay, thank you.
And so Caleb, can you just give the board a, a date that you imagine?
I'm taking the, um, maybe the week of December 6th, um, through the 10th. Would be a good, that would be a good transition week.
Okay. Does that sound good for you, Wendy?
Yeah, um, my amended contract ends, I think, on the first or the second, so we can re, renew that and then have some kind of something for the week. You know, uh, if he becomes the official interim, then I'll just have some short-term contract to, uh, work with him on transitioning the, all the work.
Okay, thank you. Caleb, do you any, have any other questions for us before?
I don't think so. Wendy's, uh, been filling me in on everything. We've had several conversations, um, so, um, I'm confident that she'll fill me in on everything I need to know and I'll just work with her to, um, you know, during that transition and, um, I'm gonna take it from there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I appreciate it, Caleb. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I appreciate it, Caleb.
Thank you, sure. Thank you very much and it's been nice to meet you all and thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah.
To work for the town of Blanford.
Yeah, we appreciate it. You've been warned. You're gonna want to stay. It's just the way it is.
It's so nice in Windsor, I'm telling you.
I don't blame you.
And I think Caleb also has been a selectman.
Yes, I have.
Back in the nineties in, in Windsor.
Back in early nineteen nineties. While I was going to graduate school, I was on the select board. I was also the conservation chairman. And I essentially was a, doing the, the work at the Conservation Commission as the professional agent. Back then pro bono.
Yeah, oh my gosh.
Yeah. I'm doing it for parole right now.
Yeah.
I'm doing it for parole, yeah. So, when you say you work extra hours for free, that's.
I'm sure.
I've got a long history of working in the public sector, so.
Yeah.
You know, you see other people volunteer. Sometimes it's good, you know, you should know that it's important to volunteer your time also.
Yep, it's a public servant, life of a public servant. Well, thank you. Wendy, do you have, you have your report to give us?
Yeah, do you have a copy in front of you?
I, let me just check my digital, hold on. I see one here and I probably have one digitally too. So, yes, you can.
The other members do. I'll just run through things here. Um, ready?
Yes.
Okay, so the top item is the ARPA expenditure and I'm, uh, that's also on your agenda. But I am recommending that you do vote to expend, um, the fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. On this, uh, filters bill for the water department.
Okay.
And that's coming up on the agenda, I think, right? Yes, after I, after I, yeah.
It's not on the, the ARPA fund request, the carbon filtration, okay.
Yes, that's next. Um, we did hear the Shepherd Farm feasibility study grant was not funded. I don't have any feedback on that, just that it wasn't funded. Um, I think they just got a lot of applications. But I'm making a note to check to see if we can get some feedback on that.
Yeah, because, uh, that is our next step for Shepherd Farm. We need to, we need to get that done, so.
Right, and I'll talk with Shannon Walsh at PBPC more about that.
Okay.
I, I'm, uh, the job application form that the town uses, I mentioned last week. That I'd seen it and I, the one you had and it was problematic. I shared it with.
Yes.
Council who agreed and so we have a new one and it's on the website now. Um, isn't that terribly different, but there were some things in the old one that were problematic.
Okay.
Um, uh, we were invited to participate by the Hampshire Educational Collaborative in a mass in motion. Grant, project, a regional project and I had spoken with Jennifer. You're still there, I think. Um, and, and you had concerns about it being duplicative of some of the efforts. Uh, what? Her, her, her video, audio just went off, but, um, about this. But then TJ wrote and said you were interested in this. Um, I had been, I, I, on the feedback I got from Jennifer. Cause it does sort of, uh, many towns, the boards of health take the lead on those kinds of projects. Um, I went, you know, I tactfully, gracefully, graciously responded to the. Uh, Hampshire Educational Collaborate, you know, at this time, we didn't think it would be. Um, something the town would want to be a part of. And then TJ spoke up, so I reopened the door for that. Um, and I'm letting it go to whoever wants to take that on.
Wendy, is this the same, um, uh, project which we have the, um, the food truck? And the walk, the walking trail?
I believe so.
Okay, so what is the next, um, opportunity? Is there another opportunity specific or?
I think we just say we'll join in, um, but then it obligates. It obligates, I can't say what specifically, but Jennifer is listening and wants to, go ahead. Great.
So, I, I, I did speak with the woman and, um, had asked her a bunch of questions, which she was unable to answer for me at that time. Um, and due to the fact that we only had one person from town participate. And her, the two meetings she had, it didn't really warrant the concern. Or it seemed like the, um, interest of anybody in town for this. Um, this has nothing to do with the walks or like, and the thing in the, um, the park we just did. Um, or the food truck or the, the, what do you call it? The food mart. It's not, um, it's a part of that, but it's not the same thing. And right now she's just looking to get bodies. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does to me. It does, Jennifer.
Um, so, I mean, there's more interest. If TJ's interested and he wants to take it on. The board of health will join in with him, but as a single thing, all alone, we're not interested in doing that. We've got a lot on our plate.
Okay, yeah, understandably. Um, so, I mean, I'm definitely interested in hearing more specifics. Um, as far as like what it is that, um, she, that, that she would need from us. But I think that, uh, the, the other two programs that we've done with them were pretty successful. So, I would agree that I'd be interested in joining on, um, to see what, what the obligation is. And then, um, if it feels like too much, we can say no, um, or, you know, see if there's specifically anyone that's interested in that opportunity. But, um.
Right, not very clear on what the next steps were. She was really just looking for towns to sign up. And I couldn't get a clear of what they were really offering us.
Okay, so does signing up, um, obligate us to anything or just keeps us in the loop?
I think it obligates us.
Yeah, it obligates us.
Obligates us.
Do whatever it is. And at that time, she couldn't really clearly say. It was basically talk about the same. You know, not a whole bunch. I can't, I feel stupid not being able to tell you, but she couldn't answer.
So, okay, so yeah, so I guess that's, I had the same question that Jennifer, like what, if, you know, we're interested. But we would like to know what we're signing up for before we sign up. So, she can provide more information than. We both.
Why doesn't she come to one of the meetings?
What was the question?
She asked why, why they don't come to one of your meetings.
Yeah.
Why don't they, our meeting and, and let her, you know, spend fifteen, twenty minutes telling us what, what it is they really want us to do.
Let's invite them to the next meeting. Can we, can we put that on the agenda?
I made a note of that to, uh.
Yeah, thank you. We'll do that and then we'll see, um, we'll go from there.
Yeah, she's a, a full-time, I think, full-time employee with the Educational Collaborative, so she works eight times. Um, so I don't know if we can assume she, she'd be available at the next meeting, but I will follow up with her to see if that's possible.
Be a Zoom too, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next thing I have is the, uh, the, this, this is. Uh, putting Hill Road, the, the, um, Springfield Water and Sewer Amendment to the Inter municipal Agreement. I had a fairly long conversation with Lisa Mead, Attorney Mead, uh, Thursday evening. Um, and she filled me in a lot on the multiple things that you've done and, um. With meetings with Springfield Water and Sewer and I got a bigger picture of, um. I had a big picture. Now I have an even bigger picture and. Any rate, um, this is very specific. This is this letter that's been going around with the attached map and all of that. Lisa's got it now and she's reviewing it and she will have not, I did not hear back from her by the end of today. So, that'll be on your old business on a future meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Um, CARES Act, um, I did get information from, uh, counties. That, um, we do have some money left over. You know, we had the hundred and eleven thousand. We only could allocate about eight thousand. Uh, we have to do the final closeout by December third. Um, and I think there's a small balance and Joanne, pipe up if you, you know this. It was something like, something like four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, something like that. Or eighty-three dollars. At any rate, uh, that's, I'm relying on them supposedly. Lisa at Kinsheriff is the CARES Act specialist, so I'm relying on their guidance. And, um, we'll find out how we can spend that money. It's ours, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, the Better Together Grants, another one of these, um, relatively small grants. That in administrative and bureaucracy and reporting cost a lot more than maybe sometimes they're worth. There's a lot of reporting to do with. This is the grant for twenty-five thousand dollars that, uh, the town has, uh, to provide. Technology training and actual tablets or other devices to. Um, it, uh, well, in the application that was made to low-income elderly residents. Um, I'm not sure if it, what that means, low income or, you know, I'd been led to believe it was any seniors who wanted, who, who wanted to participate. Uh, Peter Langmore was named the outreach coordinator for this and the council on aging folks have been making some calls. And, um, trying to keep this going. Um, we are behind on assigned tasks and reporting. Uh, we asked for one year. Most of the other grantees asked for two years. I'm gonna ask for an extension. Not that we would use the full two years, but the two years gives us breathing room to make this project work. When there's been so much transition and challenges, uh, people are facing who are also part of this team. And also, um, I am going to be speaking directly with, I've been emailing. I'm forgetting Brittany's last name, but a contact person there. Mary Walsh has been very helpful to the town. Um, she's another consultant that's been brought into work with these grants and the recipients. So, I'm just giving you a report on this. Um, I'm mostly just telling you, well, I'm telling you things because I think you should know. But also, it's what is consuming the time of the town administrator. Um, and the next thing is just that, um, I plan to write a pretty substantial transition plan exit memo. That will be beneficial for Caleb, for the town administrator, for the board, for Joanne, for whoever else wants to know. Um, kind of everything that's going on. Um. Uh, and then the next thing is, um, and I think we talked about this earlier in the meeting, is Harold from RRG. Um, he has the expertise to review the pilot agreement amendment that is Blanford's son is asking for. And, um, we'll wait to hear what he says. I don't know if you, you know, stop me if you know any, if you know things that I'm repeating. So, we don't spend time on those, but are you aware that the town, um, is, has been participating in a shared human resources study?
Um, this is through.
With Pioneer Valley Planning Commission who are just the conduits. It's, it's D L T A money. Um, and I, yeah, and, and during the course of this, um, I found out that. Um, that, um. Why am I forgetting her name right now? I was just talking to her. In Chester, the town administrator there had tried to, uh, start a, an, a different study for the same purpose. That would have the Gateway towns or those that were interested along with Gateway. Do a shared HR. Um, and I actually thought that was a great idea because Gateway has a professional, full-time. You know, a functioning, function there and they were interested apparently, but PBPC, she, she told me that PBPC wasn't responsive. To what, what she was requesting. So, anyway, we're in this program now. Um, that is the towns of Blanford, Chester, West Hampton and Southampton. Um, they've just put out a request for quotes to find a consultant to look at the needs and the options for human resources services. On behalf of these towns.
Thank you. I completely forgotten about that, so I appreciate you bringing it, bringing it.
Well, that's, that's taking my time too. Like, it's in a meeting and I taught Eric, Eric Weiss, who is leading this. I had a long, long conversation with him outside the meeting as well. We're all in different places, you know, that's the thing. I've been involved with this kind of study before up in Franklin County and, um. And a couple of them, so it's, it's, it's really, I, I will just say this. I believe very strongly that it's important to have your human resources functions in order. It's the biggest area of liability, as this town knows, uh, for cities and towns. Um, maybe outside police misconduct, which is the other large area of liability. So, it's really important to have. Uh, human resources in place. Joanne and I have talked a few times. She's real interested in seeing that, that gets. Uh, the employee files are in good order in the select board, select board and town administrator's office, so. So, um, green communities, Kara, I have there, hopefully in front of you, the, the signatory page for you to sign. The, the report has, the annual report has been submitted with probably a few questions and we'll be hearing back. But I promised them that we would get that page signed and, uh, it, it gets attached to the, the multi-tabbed. Excel report that, um, Jacinda Williams put together from, what, Jacinda's from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. The RPAs, the regional planning agencies have been enormously helpful to these smaller communities that don't have full people. Who are devoting a tremendous amount of time it takes to get the green communities reports done.
In front of me, but I don't know, I don't.
Joanne did, I, I asked Joanne to, um, print it. I actually have it and could, could fax it over, um.
Joanne, just up that for a second when she comes back.
Okay. Okay, but if, if that happens, I can, I can go fax it over, so. Um. And the last for right now is, um, Belfour Cannabis Operation where you, you have a host community agreement. Has asked for a change in their, their agreement, uh, which includes a delivery option, hence turkeys. So, um, uh, and I've been in touch with council and Belfour and council is reviewing. Uh, I think, uh, Mark is, um, might be away and he said he'd get back to us next week on his review of what they're requesting. There are some changes and he, he's, he and I've talked a little bit about it and gave some advice. But he wanted more time to look at what they're actually proposing. And I'll stop there. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Fax that cover page, whatever you need.
Uh, Joanne, do we have a green communities report for me to sign? Do you know?
The cover page?
There was, there's a cover page. Hold on, I might have something. Thought I saw something in an email.
It's the second tab in the Excel that I forwarded you to, Joanne, but I could fax it over right now.
Second tabs, we never look at those.
No, I didn't, I didn't do the second tab. I did the first one.
Do you mind printing it for me?
Okay, wait, check that. Does the first one, I could be wrong. Check, just check, is the first one have? I thought that was the instructions, but it could have it on there.
That's our first census. Okay, so you know, it should come up here. Hold on.
No, no, that, that's something else. That I just wanted you to see, um, when I was talking with, um. In Chester, she said she had requested and gotten the census and I said, oh, could you please send it to me? I just thought it would be of interest to the board to see what, how, the numbers of students registered in the, in the. That, you know, in the various schools, including Blanford.
Okay, so the green communities, is it in an, it's not in an Excel sheet that you sent?
I, it, it is as an attachment from Jacinda Williams. Okay, see Jane Pfister, let's open that up.
I think this is it.
Scroll down.
And I'm gonna go to here.
Uh-huh, yes, there it is. Okay.
You need this, this first page right here?
Yep, and I can, again, I can fax it over. That was what I needed printed.
No, you know, I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna forward it right now to Joanne, unless she has it in front of her.
I did forward it, but, but, you know, then it'll be clearer because there were a couple of things.
I'm gonna send it again and then it's gonna be at the big top of your, stop it.
I'm sending it to me and I'm gonna do what with it?
Uh, if you can just. Print that second tab and have, print the second tab and have Kara sign it. It's the cover signatory page for the final report, the annual report for the green communities.
Forward to Joanne Martin. Print second tab. I think it's.
Which is the second tab, just to be clear.
Okay.
Because you can't tell.
Oh, so I sent that. So we'll get that done. And then I think that was everything. Look back up, um. I had something, uh, the, I pinned it up here. Not the free advertising. This one, oh yeah, the F R T A. Can we just have them come to to our select board meeting and review the contract, the quarter report? Or, or no, they'd like to reschedule time to review our contract. Can we just do this during a selectman meeting? Because I know that that you're not able to do it and I'm not able to do it. So if we can just have them come.
Sure. You want me to email them and ask them to um.
Come. That would be super helpful if they could just, yeah, that way it's, uh, because I saw that and and it. I was like, ah, I can't do this. And then it just hit me, oh wait, we can just do it in a select board meeting.
Well, I think that's good because I I think that it gives the public an opportunity to also hear about.
Yeah.
What services are being provided. So I I'll, I will have that down as to follow up with that.
Would you do me a favor and C C Margaret?
Yes.
So that she knows and can come to that meeting.
Okay.
She'll want to be a part of that. And I'm gonna send out the uh, pre-advertising opportunity to the. Business, uh, the Blanford business folks. I don't know if you saw that. There's a. That's something you had sent to me. I was just trying to figure out what to, what the heck to do with this, but.
Yeah, I I've, I left it to you to figure that out.
No problem. Sometimes I need to sit with things for a few days before I can actually.
That's a good idea. It's better than jumping on them.
So that's on my to-do list. So I will send that out. And I I scheduled that meeting. And I was just looking on my calendar and I'm not seeing it. So I need to. Remind myself when it is. I I'm pretty sure I did schedule it for December. So, uh. I'm gonna have to figure out when, when.
Yeah, I can't remember.
It's gonna be in an.
Jennifer, Jennifer, if you're still on, maybe you remember.
Let's see. Oh, I thought I saw him.
It's the third.
When is it?
The thirtieth? The next meeting?
Did we say the thirtieth of November?
I thought so. I thought that's what I saw.
What did I call it? The B S A, Business Blanford, no, B B A? I don't know. I'll have to figure.
B C, E C B A, Blanford Civic and Business Association.
I don't think that's what I called it, though.
Oh, for you mean to find it, yeah.
Actually, not what I called it. All right. I'll figure it out. There was no attachment?
Right.
Oh, boy. Okay, let me send it again.
I I can fax it over.
Oh, does, Joanne, would it be easier if she faxes it over, Wendy faxes it?
Whatever. She have her fax number, you mean email?
Give me, give me the fax number you'd like me to use.
Four one three.
Yeah.
Eight four eight. Zero nine zero eight. Joanne shaking her head at me. Hold on. Gonna be here somewhere.
Oh, I could also scan it and email it. What would you like?
Hold on, I'm on the town website. Oh, nine oh eight. How's that for a memory? That's what it is.
And where will that go?
I scared you?
Yes, you did.
That'll go to Joanne, that'll go to the copy machine.
I am going to, um. Turn off my video.
Okay.
And do that. Okay.
All right, and I'm gonna let Dave go because I know he's, he has stuff. What do you, what do you gotta tell us, Dave?
Well, the stage is done. Great.
Great job.
No, but, hey.
Then, um. That hurry is going for interview.
Okay.
For C D L.
Great.
Um. The triangle was surveyed.
Okay, the up in North Blanford?
The common.
The common, okay.
Yeah, they're out there doing that the other day when Tom and I was up there.
Okay.
Um. Still waiting on a status of the Blair Road issue with, um, Springfield Water.
Okay.
And we started doing some work on. North Blanford was the shoulder work.
In preparation?
Yes, yes. And I've been, I've had a phone call from somebody already. And I informed them, once we get going farther, we are going to come back and we are going to clean up the edges of the road.
Okay, so you already had a question?
Yes.
Thank you for getting back to them.
Um, that's it.
Are we ready for winter?
We never ready.
You know, I'm just thinking that we have not received letters from Maple Road or Beagle yet. And we should probably ask residents from Cabo Mountain Road to send the letter just to cover ourselves, since that's technically not a road. Um. Okay. So we should, we should be. Yes.
Are we gonna get plowed? Are we gonna get plowed over here?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate, I really do.
Uh, we're just saying that we we're gonna, um, reach out and ask for letters from, um, residents of Cabo Mountain. Um, just so that we have it on record, just like we do with Maple and Beagle.
Oh, okay.
Well, that works.
Yes.
And that way, going forward, I, that'll just be something else we have to show Springfield.
Oh, I'll keep a track of hours and. Equipment and material.
Yeah, thank you. Keep it on a separate spreadsheet. Perfect. I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too. Um, Dave, I forget to ask you to talk first and I apologize. I should ask you to talk first because you've been here all day.
Oh.
So I'm sorry for making you wait the whole meeting. Um.
I'm used to it.
What we can do is if we can start to put you on the agenda. If you want, you know what? Do you want to start coming up under audience participation?
That'd be awesome.
Then that way you can just get out. Yeah, I'm so sorry. You shouldn't have to be here this late. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you.
Um, all right, Wendy, the, the last thing we have up is the ARPA funds for the carbon filtration and it's the fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. Just want you all to realize how quickly and efficiently I read that number.
Fully noted.
Thank you.
Now, is this on that, uh?
Yes.
R P A list?
Yeah.
Or is this in addition to all the?
No, it's, it's in there. It's in there.
This is already a request. This is just the detailed, um.
This is actually a bill already, uh, that they incurred.
Yeah, so this is for. Uh, seven hundred and eighty cubic feet of this stuff. Uh, coal-based material. And then we've got the labor to back out and take back. Non-haz and send for reactivation. And then the labor to slurry new J C into the filters. Okay, so they're looking for help. With the, uh, with this from ARPA funds out of the three hundred and sixty thousand we have from ARPA funds?
It says available three hundred and sixty.
Three hundred and thirty-six, okay. Thank you. Um. What do you guys think?
I thought we were going to take that out of free cash for stabilization. Because if you add up everything, the water department watch, uh, we got thirty thousand dollars to play with on their wish list is all done. I just added it up and it comes up to three hundred. Thousand and one, three hundred, hundred thousand and one hundred dollars.
So.
All their requests.
For all their requests comes up to three hundred and one.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's eating up all the ARPA and that's not.
And also, this is maintenance. This is a new or unplanned business maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that shouldn't be coming out of ARPA.
No, I'll believe so either, too.
So, do you guys want to ask them about their water stabilization fund and if they? Have the ability to use that? I think they have a hundred and nineteen thousand in there.
Well, why have they got it if they, if they want this?
So I guess our question to water is, is this, um. Is this maintenance or is this a project? Because if it's a project, that's sort of outside the scope of their budget.
You, it sounds like you have lo, you obviously have longer and deeper understanding of the needs. I sat down with, um. Gordon to try to get an overview of it and it was quite overwhelming. Um, sounds like. The way he's described it, everything's had to be rebuilt. There's been a lot of. Challenges with the system that needed upgrading and a lot of failures, at least the way, the way he described things to me. So. Um, I'm. Happy to, you know, if you wanted to call him in and discuss that, that, that sounds like a good idea.
I'm just sending him a message now. Um, so, yeah, so I guess we just have some questions. Um, so we could put this on as an action item for next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have more to come in here. Get ugly and talk with them.
Um, so speaking of ARPA funds, though. Do we have, um. Some more specific, uh. Can we look at the actual requests, um?
Yeah, I I thought I emailed you all a cleaner, um, spreadsheet of all of the requests.
Let me double. I think, let me stop share so you don't have to see me. Um, okay, I'll double check. You may have, I may just.
With the, you know, with the date, I may gave it a heading. I gave more, you know, put more columns in and.
I see the the spreadsheet that has just like the list, but it says like broadband. I don't know what that means. Is there something?
No, I I took what Josh had and kind of. Uh. Gave column titles and a date and things like that to it. And I thought I emailed that to all of you, you know, just so you knew, but.
Is this what you're talking about, Wendy?
Yes, that is, I believe. Was that in your pack?
Um, I have some, I just would love some more detail because like this person up here says that they want money for broadband. They want three hundred thousand. I don't understand what that means. Is there? Is there more David Picker, Picker? Is there more information, um, from the application?
I think that is all, you know, mo, all, most all of that was compiled by Josh. And I think his thinking was, um, you know, that people who. That, um, hopefully you could consolidate. I think there were a couple for the fairgrounds and the, one person should be a spokesperson for each item per. You know, request. Peter probably should be, you know. Over, I'm, I'm gonna just stick my neck out and say, Peter's the one I think who should be letting you know about what the broadband needs are. And, um.
Person applied for ARPA funds for. One was for three hundred thousand dollars for broadband and then the other was for Bruman Culver.
That's supposed to be Brooklyn.
Brookman Culver, but they put no money. So, but this is, this person, this is not Peter Langmore. I'm just curious, uh. If we have more information from these people. So when we have to make that decision as to where we want to spend the ARPA money? Because like.
I do not, and I don't know what communications Josh had in terms of asking them for more information. Um, I haven't followed up since then. I thought perhaps. The board might becau, because you've got those connections with the people or the projects. I know that I, in terms of the fairgrounds, um. Who was it that was it T J that you were writing me or Tommy? I can't remember. But, um, you know, I kept sending information out about. Resources available to, um, I think Jen also to fairgrounds and what Franklin County got and you know that. Because I'm looking for. Other options as well as ARPA monies to spend so that, given the requests are much greater than the amount available, what other sources are there? You know, just to get those monies. And Peter and I did talk. Uh, you might have, and I I sent this out, um. Uh, Senator Heinz had announced, it was in the newspaper that, um. In the Senate, they had, he he talked about paying down the debt of these small, the rural broadband. And, um, and that looked very promising. That could help all these towns who borrowed a lot of money to to build out these systems. Um, but Peter tells me that Bill Ennin, who has been working on the. Broadband stuff for twenty-five years in the state says. It's, they've been told by the U S Treasury they probably can't do that. So we're not really sure where that's going to go. Um.
Okay, I, so he, that, that gentleman is simply asking for the three hundred thousand to offset the, um. The loan that we took out for broadband.
That, okay. I don't have that in front of me. Is that Mr. Pickard or is that Peter?
It's Mr. Pickard. I don't have anything.
I, I don't even know who he is, so.
Oh, sorry. We use one thing from Peter. It's for twenty thousand.
For broadband infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah, you talked. Yes, that was for the redundancy project. That's a very, I think that's a very good project to consider supporting as well.
I just, as long as we keep this, like, maybe we have this on like tabled items or something, but I just want to make sure that we keep this. This is, this is an ongoing conversation and we should probably be researching some of the. I know that we're not in a rush to spend the money, but now that we've got this invoice in front of us. I feel like. I would ra, I I would like to know what the others are before I commit to sixty thousand for water.
Okay, so, um.
So, when people apply, did they send a full application in or was it just this super brief?
I think from what I've seen, it was pretty, Josh filled it in where he, where there was information. Um, and didn't when there was lacking of, a lack of information. So.
You know what?
I thought, I thought that perhaps you did a first or second pass of these and. Sort of decided, you know, no, these should be consolidated or. It's duplication or something like that. You know, you had the Filmy area that I didn't have. And I still don't have really with, with a few of these, but. Um, you know, just tell me.
You're right. You're right.
So. Um, I could ask people to. Uh, attend the meeting to talk about their project. I guess that would. Or you can identify those you think should come to to talk more about their proposal.
Okay, yeah, maybe let, let's, um. Yeah, maybe we can start to schedule those, um, and break them up a little bit so we're not inundated with them. And then we can listen and sort of take notes on our own end and then make a decision after we.
Yeah, yeah, there are some that I are just probably not eligible and, you know, not really.
Okay.
So I don't know. I think you could possibly do it in one meeting if it's like four. Maybe not, depends.
All right, yeah, so if we cross out what's not eligible, we can do that first and then reach out. Okay.
And Wendy, I'll pass all that information on that you gave me to Mr. Wyman.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jennifer, did you have something?
Well, yes, I had thought that when this was first brought up that they were going to allocate X amount of dollars to the businesses. Um, and the nonprofits and then, um. And I don't remember how or what that was said, but I do know that when, in working with Josh. We did fill out a pretty likely of what we were doing, what it was for and a whole. You know, it wasn't just, you know, here's an. An invoice. I mean, some of the things I'm hearing you talk about tonight, I don't see where that has to do with COVID or ARPA funds.
Well, ARPA is not COVID. Our ARPA is different from CARES Act, which is COVID related. Yeah.
I, I understand that. I guess what I should rephrase that and say, in recovering from, how to help and enhance our town, um.
Jennifer, you talked about, um. Uh, allocating a certain amount for small business, um, a certain amount for municipal projects. Um, we had not specified how much yet. Um, but we definitely did talk about breaking into categories. And so just so that you know, what I see from yours, Jennifer, here. I see Jen, I see your name, I see the address, um, the project title says Recover, Reopen Front and Back Store. There's a price. And then it's just the category is address negative economic impact. So that's all the information I have in front of me. Are you telling me you filled out online? So I guess I have to reach out to Josh and get the specific emails, the the forms that were filled out.
No, I should have that somewhere. I should hold. Yeah.
But yeah, there's a whole thing filled out with, with a big paragraph of. Yeah.
Okay, let me look, let me look, let me look for it. Okay.
There was a lot of them that had narratives.
So we need to see the complete narratives. Okay.
So, okay, so you've never seen those? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're on Josh's computer. He showed them to me.
Okay, I'm on it now. Goodbye, I'm gonna look. No, I don't know. Maybe I, I don't know what, I. No, I don't know, maybe I, I don't know what, I, I might be able to stay and look, so let's see.
No, no worries, I think we're just about to wrap up, um, okay, so, uh, Joanne, just, I don't, you were on printing that, we asked that, um, water, um, come to talk to us about this carbon filtration system, um, for the next meeting, and then we're gonna put that under action item, if, in case we decide to, um, fund that or not.
And there's one other thing under new business that's not here, brought up to me today.
Okay.
And that was the golden cane that you had asked me about.
Oh, yeah, you, you, and it's in the building.
Yeah, it's in the building, and, uh, I guess, uh, uh, the person, Rita Templeman, she's the oldest, but she's no longer living in Blanford.
Okay.
And I think the council on aging is looking, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, looking to give it to, uh,
Summer.
Summer, yes, thank you.
I did hear that.
I haven't heard that yet, but I'm gonna be surprised.
Yeah, it was mentioned to me tonight when we were in the first meeting.
Yeah, I haven't talked to Margaret for a few days, so.
Um, Margaret did speak to me, she, the council on aging is thinking that because, um, of the, uh, the historical value of the cane, they would like to put it in a glass case in town hall, and then do plaques with people's names, just to.
Oh, okay.
Um, with the year, so I thought that was really a great idea, um, and so I said, I don't think you need to meet with us to, to do that. Um, go ahead, and then, you know, if you need us for anything, let us know.
Want us to display, displayed in the hall.
Yeah, so it'll be displayed till everyone can see it, and, um, because I didn't know it exists before Michelle said something to me, a couple weeks ago.
Well, that's such a good idea.
So I think that'll be pretty cool, I guess that's what a lot of town halls are doing, so, um, so I let her know that it is in the building.
Who has it now?
They're gonna proceed with that.
It's in the, Josh's office, in that little closet.
It was.
Yeah, I, I've seen it there, I did, I don't think it had a gold head, I just noticed it the other day, I think it has like an animal head. Or am I? Okay.
Yeah, it was Millie Crane?
Like a duck head, you know?
Yes, yep, it's in the, it's in the closet there, yep.
So I guess the history behind it is that they were given out to town, towns, the state, is that the history? So I, I had no, no idea, that's pretty wild, so, yeah.
It's a cool idea.
Yeah, I kind of hope I never receive it.
I, me too.
Wouldn't make you die. I want that honor, um, okay, thank you for bringing that back. Um, do, do, what's this, it's not to be in compliance, I don't think I need that, and then we just had this, um, the census that you gave us. Um, so this tells us we have, Blanford has, wow, is this right, for pre, okay, I guess it's not that high of a number, we've got forty-four point five, pre through six kids. Um, total kids in the Gateway District, we've got, um, seventy-seven and a half. I don't know who that half is.
I don't know, it's all good.
Uh, eleven school choice, and so that's, we have eleven percent, eleven point four percent. Um, so it looks like the highest is, um, Huntington with thirty-four percent, and then Russell. So that, um, will affect our next year's budget, I'm not sure if that's up or down, so it doesn't, it doesn't compare from last year, so I don't know.
Well, I'm in the ARPA folders, and there, I don't see any more detail.
Okay, well, I'll ask Josh where they went, he must.
I see the, uh, the guidance memos from the state, and I see the spreadsheet, but that's all I see in the ARPA folder, so.
So it must be in a, I, I'm guessing that when people individually filled them out and sent them in, they might be in an individual email, unless he takes his, like, I take my emails and I put them into files, you know, as.
Yeah, he doesn't, he doesn't, he didn't, yeah.
Yeah, you have to talk to him to find them.
So, uh, you might be.
I'm also, I, I also have a folder, I created, you know, a, like, an old-fashioned one, paper, and I believe I might have that there on, by my desk, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we could search, um, ARPA, and they might all pop up together or something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I think that's it, oh, we, uh, we would make a motion, is what number warrant is this, it was just, you know what?
No, yeah, I didn't put that on the.
That's okay, I, I got it now, so, um, I don't know what number warrant it is.
Warrant.
But I could say, okay, we're going to, um, motion to accept the warrant dated eleven twenty-three twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did you see that the payroll's not in there yet?
Yes.
It'll be in tomorrow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um.
I have a question.
Yes.
Joanne, did you get the fax?
Yes, I gave them, she signed it, yes.
Oh, good, okay, and you can just leave that on my desk, I'll, I'll get that in.
Okay.
Um.
All right, oh, you know what we didn't do was pardon a turkey this year. We pardoned it, remember the year we pardoned a turkey?
Yeah.
I think Bill ate it.
That was good turkey.
What was her name? You missed that, Wendy, we, we had a live turkey, we pardoned it one year.
Oh.
Very exciting.
I have, I have a question, um, Thursday is Thanksgiving, um, I don't know what your, what the office hours are, some towns close half a day on Wednesday and that kind of, what does Blanford do?
Um, that's an excellent question. I would say close half day Wednesday, we're definitely off Friday.
Oh, you are?
Thursday, Friday, right?
The town, the town is closed, okay.
Signs up for officially closed on Friday, because I think our official holiday is only Thursday.
Uh, okay, is Friday the holiday that the, um, highway uses as like?
Yeah, but they didn't get it, because they took it away.
They didn't do it this, he's so mean, isn't he? He's such a meanie, um, okay, so they're not taking Friday off.
No, he said they had to, it used to be the swap Veterans Day for the day after Thanksgiving, he said, he said no way.
Oh, he must have had something else up his sleeve.
Well, whether he did or not, I think his sleeve fell off, they haven't got that, they haven't got anything.
As far as I know, we work, uh, Wednesday, regular day, and Friday, regular day.
Really?
Just on Thursday.
That's horrible.
But your municipality, back to that again.
Who's the Scrooge that makes you?
No money, no benefits, you know?
Um, maybe the union contract speaks to it for the highway people, too.
Union contract, yeah, with the highway, but I would say, I mean, your hours are flexible, correct, so I mean.
I plan to be in on Friday.
Okay, well, if that's, yeah, I mean.
It doesn't matter to me.
Officially closed on Friday, but everyone in here has flexible hours, if they are out Friday, they're out Friday, I guess they would just have to let whoever, if they need to.
Yeah, and that's pretty much what people do here, anyway, there's so few employees here, and if something comes up on a day, they post it on the website, that.
Yeah.
The hours are different.
Yeah, I just didn't know whether we should post something on the website about special hours of the week, you know, when we're not open.
Oh, me.
I'll give her Thanksgiving, I'll tell her about Thanksgiving, I always tell her about the holidays.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone have any more questions? That's the only signature page for that one. You have a question, Joanne wants to go home, yes, uh, you can go home, so, uh, meeting will be adjourned at seven thirty-six.
We got anything to sign?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna pass it to you. So this says payroll, but we don't need to sign it yet. Okay. All right, I'm gonna shut the meeting down, thank you.
Thank you, bye, everybody. If I don't see you, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you too, happy Turkey Day.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.